We're not going to do the pledge here, we're just going to start the meeting. Okay? All right, let's get this meeting started, it's 5:00 o'clock. Go ahead Jeff.
All right, Mr. Chair, so we've got a couple things to talk about before we get into the first one, I want to talk a little bit about staff and for next year. I think we have a few that had some issues there.
Which one is that Jeff? I don't see it anywhere. Oh, okay, very good, all right.
She looks like this.
Okay.
So anyway, as I stated earlier in this, your council request that you go half-time, and half-time means working 9 days, half-days, 9 to full-days. So some scenarios that we could consider, you can see on the top one, that's what we're currently doing, we have a 1.0 licensed school nurse, we have a health services assistant on Gilbert Campus for 73 days, we've seen it correspond to cost, what option we can have, half-time nurse and two health services assistants, the cost there goes up a little bit, another option would be to have a half-time nurse and two health service assistants at 139 days, what that means is, on the days opposite when our licensed school nurses and the health services assistants, they would have, it's kind of a schedule, we'll see if it corresponds to cost for that, then another option would be, staff, two health service assistants, you can see the cost for that, kind of a quasi-option, or for me, I guess my recommendation would be to, whatever path we choose, I think we would like some consistency, we don't have any schedule or no release, exactly what we're supposed to do there, I would just assume, leave our licensed school nurse at 1.0 and continue to have the full-time health services assistant on Gilbert Campus for 173 days, it's not really full-time, but full-time during the school year. So I just open it up to, if anyone has an opinion on that, go ahead.
Oh, I just know that having a half-time nurse, I mean, that's not what, I mean, it's always been, been brought up at some of the meetings, that we need a nurse, full-time at the Gilbert Campus versus half-time. So...
The licensed school nurse position actually houses out of the Franklin, the health services assistant is in the Gilbert.
That's the full-time position in Gilbert.
Okay.
I support a full-time nurse.
So I'm not asking you to, just so we're clear, I'm not asking you to cut it to half-time, I'm not asking you to cut anything, it's just a matter of staffing, we have a one person in that FD, 1.0 FD, or you want to do two, or three, or four, and I'm recommending we have one.
I support that.
Me as well.
I agree.
Yeah, I guess, I don't understand the benefit to the alternative.
I just think we should have a status quo like we had last year, so I agree.
Okay.
So, given what I'm hearing here, I will relay that message to our current one, and if she still wishes to resign, that would be up to her, or if she wants to keep the 1.0, that would be up to her as well, and if there is a resignation, I will repost her what we have done.
Okay, very good.
All right. All right, moving on to school buses, we have a spreadsheet, should be printed here, that has a little bit of color on it, and some fine print. So you can see that, on the top there, you can see our bus fleet, and we, the two that are highlighted, the 2005 Thomas and the number four and number 16, they're both bought in 2005, both Thomases, over 100,000 miles on each. We did, at the last regular meeting, the board chose to replace one of them, one of the things that we wanted to bring to you today, and Mike is here along with me, is to show you where we're at bus-wise, and you can see that, what's the total number of buses we have, Mike?
I think there's 14.
14 buses, three of them are spares, and if you're just looking at it straight from your standpoint, I mean, you have to go over to the condition part, and you wonder why we still have a 1998 in service, and why we're looking at getting rid of a 2005, a lot of it has to do with the route that that particular bus is on, I mean, a lot of the rural routes that are on the dirt roads, they're tough on the buses, in town isn't so bad, so they last a lot longer. The two, number four and number 16, are in pretty tough shape right now, like I said previously, when Director Sather asked, I mean, we aren't in emergency needs, but we do have buses that go down for various reasons, and it, or we have somebody that needs to go to an activity somewhere, so that, it is nice to have those three spares, in case something happens, and we would like to continue to keep our rotation up so that we don't fall behind again, so, I mean, if we can get that second bus this year, I think it would be a wise purchase myself. Anything you want to add, Mike?
Well, as you can see, we're wearing blue, that's kind of just a recommended initiative we'd make, while that changes from year to year depending on what happens in the bus over the year.
Definitely.
Just to add to what Jeff said, about some of the ones have more mileage that we're keeping right now than the other ones, maybe it's because of the routes, it is just because it's not on the road as much, maybe the other ones were more for extra curricular, so, you know, they've built up the miles, a lot of them never see gravel roads, the ones that do, we are thinking of replacing are, so, let me say, just adds on that, and then we're the ones also that are costing the school a little bit more money, we bond the road.
So what do we do with these old buses? Do we, do we sell them to who, or do we, I mean, would it be best to, could we put them up on auction, or, I mean, for...
Our first option is to try to trade them in, that doesn't always work, because they don't necessarily want them.
Right.
So if that doesn't work, we put an ad in the paper for sealed bid.
Okay.
Do we just advertise locally, or do we advertise area-wide, regionally?
We just put in the MSAVID news.
Local?
And the seal bids are...
There isn't a people lining up for older, rusty buses?
They are diesels, right?
Yeah.
We only have two local, or three local bus providers, or bus service providers in the area, so we...
You're talking drivers?
Um, well...
Like Schubach and Brown, is that what you're getting at?
Yes, Schubach, Brown, and Skriens.
Yeah.
So if we only advertise locally, they're probably the only three entities that would be interested in that, I mean, would it be prudent to advertise more regionally?
Oh, I don't think advertising a bus that's no longer fit for us, and then asking our kids to ride on that bus, that we took out a commission.
I mean, there'd be more...
I mean, I'm looking at it that way.
They might use it for parts, they might not have to be used, and then, I'm just saying, if you advertise more regionally, you get a better price for it, and you get more people that have an option to buy it.
What are these, what are these two Thomas buses, what are they powered, I mean, what are they, what platform are they, what platform are they sitting on, as far as a Chevy, Ford, International, what are they?
You mean the bodies, how it's...
Yeah, the engines and all that, they're diesel, right? These are diesels?
Yeah, they're diesel, and if you look on it, it just says, they're built by the Thomas Bus Company, so...
Actually, we don't know what the drivetrain is?
No.
Okay.
I mean, I could get more of a scratch on it, I guess.
Okay.
That helps.
I'm just curious, I mean, if they're diesels, and they only got 104,000 miles, I mean, that'd be sad, I mean, to somebody who's looking for a diesel engine per se, I mean, that'd be a sad after-low mileage engine.
Engines are fine, it's just the bodies.
Right, and I get that.
So, to not, okay. So I'm trying to have my filter on really tight today, so I, I'm okay with looking at advertising outside of MSAVID daily news, however, there's also a cost-to-benefit factor that has to be considered in any advertising that we're paying for, so what we would be recovering for the bus, so just keep being in mind on that, and I'm fine with administration making decisions.
What's with the buses, like, is it rust on the wheel wells and that, or...
Well, there is, there is definitely a lot of that, you see, a lot of the problem is that, that'd be DOT inspected, and they kind of, they do their inspection, and like, on this bus four, we had to paint it throughout the wheel wells, with all the rust was, just to make it so we could go back on the road, because the DOT will flag your bus, and if they flag the bus, then it can't be used for students at all, that's why it's nice that we have three spares, because if that happens, you know, then we can go, and it could be for any little thing, just a little blinker out, a broken marker light, I mean, it has to be ready to go on the road, so...
Yeah, I understand, that's a big reason, that the frame, if the frame is rusted, then that definitely...
Well, yeah, Tom, on our roads here, with all, like, on 37 from here to Gilbert, that just pawns the springs out of them buses, we're, I think we replaced four springs on four different buses this year, just from broken these springs, and the salt on the roads going up there, we try to wash them off as good as we can, you know, and every once in a while, we will take them through the bus wash, don't it, AEOA, whatever, but yeah, the salt just eats away the body of the bus.
But the new buses, they have the same problems still.
Well, new buses, we try to keep off the bad roads, you know, the longer routes, the ones where the backcountry roads, try to keep them on the blacktop.
Can United, Trump, Bobby, and Calhoun, can replace the rest of parts on the front of it?
We've done that.
They have.
We've reskinned them, I think number four's been reskinned twice.
Yep, it's just that, how much more do you want to put into it, Tom?
Well, I'll just look at it all, repairing versus building without a fine move, if you're getting over 100,000 miles, it's not a difficult issue.
Right.
Looking at both aspects at all, it's like bringing a vehicle into a body shop, you have to repair it after a collision and all.
We saw it under rusty frames, and gas tanks going through, and that's...
It also has to pass inspection, I'm sure, that's a lot.
So, I mean, I can see the roads, I mean, I traveled in my van multiple times, and it's, this year was exceptionally worse for, you know, any vehicle, there was ball joints and tire out ends and shock, I mean, that had broken my vehicle, so I...
169 to Tower and stuff?
No, 169 was bad, and between that and Gilbert was bad, and I get it, I mean, at a certain point, but those would be common wear items, I would, you know, but then again, it's all about the safety, if the buses are, the cabs are starting to rot off the frames, and, you know, there's no way you can, you know, get all the salt off with any car wash, I mean, you can make the outside look good, but it's everything underneath, like brake lines, and, you know, and I get it, Mike, I get the, the deal with the, with the...
Yeah, it's that and the other.
I get it.
Did we budget for one, or for two?
One.
I'd say we stick with one. We budgeted for one last year, correct?
Yeah.
And we did not use that.
So you budgeted?
Budgeted for one last year.
One for last year and one for this year?
You approved it.
But last year's wasn't purchased.
So theoretically, this year you should be purchasing two, correct Jeff?
Well, that does go over, I mean, you approved a new budget this year, so...
So this would have to get taken out of the general funds account. I still say that, I feel that we should purchase them, just to be able to help stick on the schedule, because at some point, I mean, there's, there's a reason that they plan and try to have things accounted for, so we're not usually getting hit with two in one year, so, at some point, it's going to happen, if we only do the one replacement this year.
So we already approved replacement of bus number, what, four or 16?
Four.
So now we're, we're asking for an additional bus purchase, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so which would replace number 16?
And that says PM daily, how is that, that's only one trip a day instead of two?
Right. That's what the bus is currently doing.
Okay.
On the ones that we're replacing, they're currently just doing the PM route.
Number four too?
Number four was on the morning and afternoon, but we took it out because it had some problems, so it was just going out the end of the day.
So wait, that's what you say, 16 is PM daily, but four, it says daily, twice a day?
Yes.
How many miles a day do these, these particular buses get a day?
They're averaging probably 40 miles in the morning, 40 in the afternoon, going home, and then whatever extra curricular we need. That's the average.
By looking at the two serial numbers, they were bought pretty close to each other, weren't they?
Mm-hmm.
About the same time.
And the recommendation is you want to buy two, you think it's a good time, with all the talks we have coming up, and you think two is necessary?
Yeah, regardless of the outcome, we're still driving buses, it's not a waste.
I would say that if it's your recommendation to buy an additional bus, I would see no problem with that, if, you know, I'm not an expert on buses and their conditions, so that's your recommendation, I would...
And this is coming from our mechanic, that he's, I mean, he's recommending that they're done, I mean, that's...
Okay.
They just reached a point where they're, we're spending so much on maintenance that...
And you look at some of these, I mean, you look at some of these buses, they just got a lot of miles on them, you know, versus these ones, but I would, I would hope that these buses, if they go out on good, we could top dollar for them, you know, and that whoever buys them, that wouldn't be using them to, you know, because if they're not fit for our kids, if they're not fit for transportation, I would hate to see them go to another business that would take it and use it to transport, you know, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Because then that would have been just a waste to buy a bus, and, you know, because we could have, but anyway, but I'll support, I'll support the additional bus purchase.
If we're a year behind in purchasing, I'll support it as well.
All right, anything else on buses? We're good on vans, you know?
Okay.
All right, well, moving on, we have Mitch is coming in about 5:30 or so, in markets that I was calling around 6, but I do have John here that came up through a few things as well, so we'll start over there.
Okay. Well, good evening, Superintendent Addy, remember the...
Superintendent...
Superintendent Chair.
No, he's having it.
Superintendent Carey, Chair Addy.
No. He's having it.
You sharing the last switch?
Nope, positive.
So I was up, and make it till also, you know, we were up last week, there was a lot of programming meetings in terms of design, architects are getting involved in things, and last Thursday, I met with Superintendent Carey, and Superintendent, they asked my opinion on the joint powers agreement and consolidation, and what that means in terms and how it affects Evolith Gilbert. So over the weekend, we created a PowerPoint, and I'll ask Jeff to share that with you, so you have copies of this, but it literally got worked on up to today, so we will get copies of this to you, so I just, I just want to talk things through with you, starting on the first page here, and it's more, there's two items, there's a joint powers agreement, right, and there's the consolidation, I'll start with the joint powers agreement, as you know, speaking the obvious, there is a referendum in Virginia for, rounding off $150 million, okay, for the high school and the Virginia elementary school and building demolition. And there, and there was the Evolith Gilbert referendum, rounding off again, $30 million for the elementary school, the plan was built in totality, as a $180 million referendum. And a lot of questions were asked during the referendum process, is Evolith Gilbert making sure they have a voice in some of these decisions that are coming up, and this joint powers agreement gives you that voice in design of the academy high school, and you need that voice, okay? As it stands now, legally, Virginia has the voice, because it's their referendum, and we need to bring you, we need the community, we need staff, we need the school boards' voice on what this joint high school is going to look like, right? It could be as simple as finishes in the building to mechanical systems, to how classrooms are laid out, how the tech areas are laid out, how the science areas and STEM areas are laid out, there's 101 questions, probably more, that are related to design, that's very important, that you have that voice in the design of the project.
John, if I might, to that point, glad Mitch is here, in the resolution that we were asked to consider last Tuesday, the one of the, whereas is in the resolution says that the ballot question was whether the school district shall be authorized to jointly construct the high school career academy with the other district, and I would interpret that to me, that the design is part of the construction project, so I don't see it that way, and I'd like to hear what Mitch has to say to that.
Yeah, in terms of the, I think you're right, I mean, I think that's one, that's the type of question that was presented to the voters, and I, you know, I admit, it's whereas, some of these whereas paragraphs, I actually borrowed from the joint powers agreement, because I thought it was pretty well laid out, so, right, so is that, I mean, so, if we have a voice inherently in the design, it's not correct that Virginia alone will make decisions on the new high school.
Not, when you have the joint power agreement signed and agreed to, then it's a joint decisions, as from Evolith Gilbert and Virginia.
I, I think it's inherent before we have, and, and believe me, we're going to get the joint powers agreement worked out, once we get it, are presented with an agreement that actually makes sense, but I think by the vote, Virginia can't take their $150 million and go ahead and build the new academy.
Well, it was two referendums right now, I, I mean, and the whole plan was this joint powers, I don't know the legal side of the things, and the, how things were worded, so certainly if there's wordsmithing, I'll leave that up to your, to your legal firms to do that, I'm just giving some of the facts around, if it doesn't get done, what could happen, I guess, or why, why it needs to be done.
Doesn't get done, we don't have a project.
Possibly, well, and I've got some other things to go through here that maybe we'll explain more to them.
And it's going to get done.
Yeah.
Well, I would, I mean, I will address that a little bit, I had a conversation earlier in the day on this as well, is that I, you know, the referendum money that was passed is premised on a joint project, so, you know, that is, it's all premised on that, so it's not as though you can take that money and just go build something on your own, it's premised on a joint project, the money is available for a joint project, so I think you're right in that, there is an inherent aspect of it, as far as how the money was presented to the voters, and what the money was intended to be used for, it was with the underlying premise that it is to be used for a project, I think you're right in that idea.
So Virginia can't alone make decisions on a new high school, including the budget, I mean, that doesn't make sense to me.
The concern, the concern though, so I, I don't even, the concern is, the longer this gets drawn out, and not that it's been long, and we haven't seen it very much, and I mean, so I'm not saying that that's the case, but the longer it goes without having an agreement in place, it's going to delay decision-making and moving the project forward, I mean, that I think we can agree upon.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I think it comes down to the explicit versus the implicit, right, so I think it certainly is implicit in a vote on, on the referendum money that was passed in Virginia, that implicit in that vote is that it's a joint project, all right, and I think that there is, I think there's some legal standing there that can be made on an implicit basis for all that vote was taken, and how it was teed up to the voters, and what they actually approved, and what the money can be used for, however, a joint powers agreement is an explicit document, a joint powers agreement is very clear in expressing, you know, how this is all going to work, and, and so I think it's very important that after the board is comfortable that you've had plenty of time to go through and draft a joint powers agreement, that you go ahead and act on it and get it in place, because, you know, there's a lot of moving parts to this thing, and you need to have a governing document that addresses the relationship between the two parties, now, I, you know, obviously, I have to be very careful on how I weigh in on this, because one of the reasons we had an outside law firm draft the joint powers agreement, is that the Virginia school district and the Evolith Gilbert school district are counterparties to this contract, my firm represents both districts, so obviously, I need to be very careful on weighing in on the substantive aspects of that contract, and that's why you had a separate legal counsel from outside the area, and then had a draft of it.
And she's available at 63?
Overall, as far as government and project, yeah, you need to have an explicit document in place that governs the relationship.
Absolutely.
But for that first bullet again, I'm trying to find that specific whereas, Matt, that you were referring to, is it on page two?
It's on page two, I think.
Page two, I think.
In the middle of the page.
Of the, yeah, of the resolution, go, correct?
Well, okay.
She'll construct...
Yes.
Right there.
Jointly or cooperatively, construct the academy, and jointly and cooperately, cooperatively operate and fund it. So we can't have contrary language, is that what you're saying, in one agreement and then the other, in the joint powers agreement and the consolidation resolution?
I was, I was just saying, I mean, the statement there, that if we don't pass the joint powers agreement, which again, we're going to pass once we get agreement, frankly, that makes sense, in my opinion, that Virginia alone can't be making these decisions on a new high school.
Well, I, I think so too, by default, they can, by default.
Yeah, I think the interpretation of that, Matt, is more of, we need to get this done, so we can start making these decisions, there's another bullet point further down that says it will and already is affecting design, and the architects need this to come together for all projects, so we can keep, so you're, it's probably not worded correctly right, but I understand your point on that.
Thank you.
The second bullet point, so when we built budgets, right, I use all my book from the referendum planning side of things, we did build it as a $180 million project, at a joint powers, and when we do that, we plan for contingencies, right, probably in that 3% range, well, that's a big, that's a big dollar amount in this size, now, our goal, everybody's goal, is to come in under budget and have contingency dollars remaining, the school boards are going to have that opportunity to, where do you spend that money, or don't spend that money, and maybe we need another playfield in Evolith Gilbert, or maybe, whatever that decision is, that joint powers board will make the decision, when the project's coming in under budget, on how those dollars are going to be spent, and I have some other examples, I don't want to take all my story too quick here, that I'm going to talk about on the size of the building, and then the next bullet point is related, Evolith Gilbert can only access to shared money, same thing, right, we built this as one project, same with the demolition, when the bonding pillars and the bonding attorneys built the plan in terms of $150 million and $30 million... million and 30 million, they, they did it that way in that dollar amount because of the state aid that Virginia gets, right? I mean, it was more economical, it was for both school districts to do it that way. And it's on that Virginia side of the ledger is the dollars for the demolition of this building if it gets demolished. So we, we need that to come together as part of the funding mechanism and an entire project.
John, can I ask a question? But, you know, you're talking about a one pot. I don't care if it's 150 and 30, money is fungible. If you take it out of here, you take it out of here, it doesn't matter. You can't say, can you say that this was designated for that because it comes out of our 30 million, or it comes out of Virginia's 150 million? It's all in one pot, right? And the joint powers board is going to make that decision together.
Correct, absolutely. But, but it's still going to be one of our very important jobs to manage the high school budget and make sure we built what we told the voters we're going to build, the Evelyn Gilbert Elementary School, and what we're going to build for them, and the Virginia along with the demolition. Again, it's not on wood, construction's on a perfect world, but if all those projects come in under budget, what other opportunities do you have to get worked on? Other things that are on a wish list, and trust me, there's been a lot of programming meetings with architects and users, there's always, this is very normal in school districts, there's 10 pounds of potatoes in a five pound bag, right? Because after thought, well, can we have a bigger auditorium? Can we have a bigger pool? Can we have more playfields? Can we have more, whatever? The list goes on and on. We know we can't afford everything, but with a goal and everything comes in under budget, let's buy as much with the community's money as possible and as a joint board agrees to, right? These things just don't happen, they have to be approved on to be spent. Going to the, the next slide, this is very similar. This one's more related to, I think, the, the bonding side of things, and we just, we just talked about that. It is a partnership in terms of how the bonds were sold. I talked about design schedule already. And now, so that's it in the joint powers. I just wanted to give a flavor of why it's important to bring, and then we'll talk consolidation in a little bit.
Excuse me, if I can, I'm, I'm sorry, but when we say the design schedule is being hampered, is that because we didn't act on the resolution that we got at the table when we came to our meeting last Tuesday?
It is, there is a lot of decisions that are going to start to happen that the design teams need on the exterior envelope of your building, to energy efficiency opportunities, to mechanical, to electrical, to interior. They're, they're going to start getting to that process very soon, that's going to start delaying the architects and engineers' work to, and now, has work been going on and they're working with staff? Absolutely. I mean, they have no one stopped, no one's just sitting in idle. But it's important. It's, it's a legal document that needs to be put into place that makes this official and puts a bow on it.
And I think, and, and I, I don't disagree with that at all, and time, we might minimize and not look at one week mattering, but one week does matter in the grand scheme of everyone's jobs, and we have full-time people working on this right now. So the one week matters. However, I also, I mean, I think that just reaffirms the need that we have to get the paperwork and anything beforehand, whether it's scheduling a study session beforehand on voting anything. I can say clearly that, and I don't think anyone would disagree, this board does not tend to vote for things that they have seen for the first time. And they want to talk and they want to process it. That is not saying anything rudely or anything, I get it, and I agree with that. So I think it just reiterates that we have to have the documents ahead of time before we're expected to be voting on stuff because it will delay. And the board, I, I don't think the board's going to feel, if it delays, it delays. Do I want it to delay? No, but I also want to make sure that we're making informed decisions and that we feel comfortable with the decisions we're making.
And not feeling pressured by, by, you know, I guess this is my perspective, but not feeling pressured to have to make split-second decisions without having a conversation, you know, much like we're having today. So, you know, I think it's important for us to get some of these questions answered, go over some of these things with the attorney being here. So if we're not understanding something, or we have a, a question about the wording of something, we can do that and get those questions answered so we're more confident in voting on a resolution or the joint powers agreement. I mean, I, I use this, I use this analogy that, you know, if you're taking out of, if you take out a bank loan, you want to know the details of that bank loan before you sign for it. And that's kind of, that is the situation. I mean, we want to know what we're, what, you know, what we're looking at before we vote on something or, you know, signing for it. You know, we need to know the details.
I gave an inversion, but I didn't make wrong. I believe that's not the point. I, just the importance of the document, and I'll give you a really good example. Pretty soon here, and it's already being worked on with options, and you've seen some of it, where, should we put the building right here? Should the varsity field or the athletic fields be here? I mean, that's some of this joint powers board. Eventually, the, the design team's going to want to say, does this make sense? On where the building, where the high school I'm talking right now, and where the academy high school are going to sit. So it's things like that that are going to come back to this group on a regularly scheduled meeting, so, but we're okay. I just, I wanted to bring some facts to you of why it's important to keep moving, and you absolutely have, need the time and have deserved the right to review the joint powers agreement.
Like, for instance, John, will you go back to the first one? Because I would have liked to have had this PowerPoint before.
Well, it was finalized about three hours ago, and I was asked to come up here Thursday last week, Polly, so we will get you, we'll get you a copy of this.
That's the first one. I mean, I just want to get up, okay? Like other, you know? Thank you.
The last bullet point on page three there is, you know, this is more related to consolidation, is delaying the resolution prevents the superintendents from moving forward for a blueprint of how the consolidation may occur. This is just authorizing the districts to begin working on a plan, okay? When you come to that vote. But it, it is truly two separate things, the joint powers agreement and consolidate. And I am nowhere near the expert on the consolidation, just, I'm presenting this PowerPoint.
Why is, John, why is 2023 the deadline? There's no deadline on the, or it has to be done by a certain time, by I triple R B or on the bonding is 20 years. The target here is all the stuff for 2023.
There's a target opening for the high school?
No, this whole project. And then, who's going to be the primary contractor, or architect or firm that'll be responsible, liable?
Cunningham Group is the architect, and we are your construction manager. And right now, the planned opening, and it's a tight timeline, is for the fall of '23.
Twenty-two.
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 Fall of '23.
Yep.
What was about?
I lost it here.
It says 25, yeah.
We're trying to gain a year.
Roosevelt says 25. Let's change the language. Yeah.
I know there's concerns on the busing with, without consolidating in terms of open enrollment, and how will that be figured out? Here's a big one, and Polly, you actually brought it up at the board workshop, and I think it was very intuitive. So right now, when the referendum was planned, remember the original plan was a new academy high school, and we're doing very heavy, remember all the discussions on a heavy remodel of the two elementary schools? And then we decided, no, let's build two elementary schools. And they were both planned around 500 students and change, okay, for talking purposes. But, you know, with the location of where the Evelyn Gilbert Elementary School is going to be on site A, and where Midway students are located, and Polly, you brought it up, maybe that building should be a little bit bigger. Now, once you consolidate and we save dollars, and, I mean, that's another big decision and opportunity to keep busing costs way down, not way down, it's going to help a lot, along with some other administrative things. So we'd like to start looking into that now, you know, because if we're going to design the building bigger and build it bigger, that's going to be an important part of it. And when you consolidate it, even comes more real, just based on population where students are located. You know, for example, there might be a student near Midway area that's a lot closer to Evelyn Elementary, Evelyn Gilbert Elementary than out of Virginia. But that needs further study. So that's another big opportunity that we don't want to miss, or you don't want to miss. By consolidating, you're going to prevent the duplicating of services, and you've talked about many of those in the past. And then delaying that is just, can be a number of other things that can occur if you, if you don't consolidate, which I think you've talked about a lot. The last page, I won't go every through on the schedule, Jeff, and then I can, you can answer more questions. So in year 2020, is, you know, the consolidation plan for the state of Minnesota, budget and finance integration, the business office consolidation, looking at attendance boundaries, and then everywhere from mascots to school colors to building names, that happens in 2020. This is, this is draft, it says draft on it. This is something for sure the joint power board is going to want to look at. The core scheduling in 2021, core scheduling, coordinate the move into the buildings, head start and early tug of programs. Now we're start to 2022, moving into the building, hopefully that fall, building ground start, school offices, student administrations, and then staffing complete, deconstruction. And then the very last project, I think this might be a year out too far. Virginia's the last elementary to be built because we have to get the kids out of that building to tear it down to start their elementary school. This is a rough draft of a schedule, by no means final. Just wanted to give you a timeframe of what we're looking at. So that's the presentation, short and sweet. I do think it is a priority, once you're done reviewing it and satisfied with the language with your attorney, to get the joint powers agreement approved. Any other questions on how that affects? Again, in my world, we're living, we're helping manage budgets and construction and schedule. But as it related to that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Well, I'm on the same wavelength as Matt, because to me, you had a lot of verbiage in there about delaying this, delaying the joint powers agreement. I will agree with you, there's, that's not the point about delaying it. It's almost like, I don't think anybody's, anybody's for delaying it, but the part I don't understand in here is that if it's inherent that, that the pool of money is together, 180 million, 30 and 150, whatever, then how can it be that one district can't decide certain things, but the other district can? To me, you're one pot of money, you're one deciding board, is the joint powers agreements are consolidated? I don't see how that can work.
But it's not yet, you don't have that agreement.
No, I'm just going to say, when it happens.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So you, this is all predicated on, you're just saying, well, now, at this point in time, we don't have a joint powers agreement, therefore we can't do any of these things, but if Virginia tonight, their meeting tonight, if they pass theirs, and we're, we're still studying ours, you're saying that they can go ahead and start making decisions? Well, then I don't understand what your first two things are.
I think that's something we need clarified by the attorney who has been doing the joint powers agreement.
And I go back to the first statement, it seems like you are saying that.
Yes.
They alone can do that. Alone, I think alone was underlying it.
Yeah.
They, well, again, the joint, again, this past is a $180 million referendum. The bond sales are going to be precedent on it, there's a joint powers agreement that's going to be put together, and that needs to get done.
Yes.
We all agree with that.
Yep.
We all agree.
It, it is, it is going to affect the decisions being made. Different words could have been maybe used instead of alone, if they did pass.
We've been hearing a lot of that lately.
So I guess, I guess I'm a little concerned because I feel like people are getting, I feel like so it begins the pitting of Evelyn Gilbert against Virginia, and I don't want to go there.
I don't want to go there.
We have been working hard for two years.
Too great of a process.
Well, but I feel like, I feel like we are contributing to that too. So I feel like certain verbiage, yep, could have been different, but we need to make sure we're keeping that in check and not assuming that this is Virginia taking over because I do not agree with that. I don't agree with what people say that, and I would like to think that I have more intelligence and so does this board than to allow anything like that to happen.
Correct.
But let's not assume and make, I feel like there's assumptions being made and that it's us against them already, and I feel like it's, it was two years of working hard, and we had great work, and we're getting at the point where decisions have to be made, and now it's time that we make those decisions. And we're tactful about it, we're meaningful about it, we get information, answer our questions, that's great, but then we make those decisions.
Well, I think everybody has been pretty clear, well, I shouldn't say everybody, but there has been a lot of board members voicing that we see consolidation as being necessary. So it's not that, you know, we don't, we don't want to do a resolution, we don't want to get the joint powers agreement done, we just want to make sure that the process and that, you know, everything's in place and in order, and everybody understands it, and it's not confusing, it's just, we need patience, you know, we need patience from, you know, both school districts, from citizens, from architects and managers, and we just need patience. We just want to make sure that, we're looking out for our district too, you know, and not in a negative way, you know, like saying anything against Virginia, because I, I have certainly enjoyed this whole process with them and how well we've worked together. But we're just trying to dot the i's and cross the t's, that's it.
And Kelly, it's, it's not my assumption at all that it's us against them, not at all. But it's confusing when up here it says that the deconstruction money is coming out of Virginia's money. Well, I thought it was all of our money, it's our family money.
And I get what you're asking, I do.
Okay, so I wasn't, it's not us against them at all, to, to me, I don't think anybody.
Thank you for clarifying, I wasn't in disagreement with what you were asking and how it was worded.
But who thinks that?
But I, but.
Who thinks us against them?
Certain community members that call me.
Well, I mean, we're talking about the board now.
I've heard it pretty directly.
I thought you were referring to board members.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, generally speaking, so when we're questioning those kinds of verbiage and language, I don't want it to see, to be like, oh, well, see, look at the words that they used, it is Virginia's trying to take over.
I mean, I guess, I guess in, in essence, you know, I mean, I think it's very important that this joint powers agreement is approved so we can make sure we have equal representation on this. So the money becomes basically one pot of money. Go ahead, Mitch.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, just one point I wanted to make, because, yeah, absolutely, you know, as far as making sure that you have a formal arrangement between the two districts and getting that joint powers agreement in place is important. But I also want to say that, okay, so in the meantime, you know, whether you act on the joint powers agreement tonight or at a subsequent meeting, but, you know, in the meantime, you've been in this process where there is not a formal agreement in place. And in any relationship like this, there's always a little bit of a weak link, right? You know, sometimes you, you kind of rely on the good faith of the other party involved. These two districts, I, you know, I think, in terms of putting this all together, really came together in a historic fashion. And you have, you know, you have a detail here to work on of the joint powers agreement and get that in place. But in the meantime, you know, I always look at it from a risk analysis. What's the risk that Virginia's school district, after all this, after all the work that we've done together to put this whole project together, what is really the risk that the Virginia school district is going to go rolling on and start doing their little thing? I would say that that risk is extraordinary. And, and, and if the shoe was on the other foot, I think the same would be true. So yes, you got some work to do to get the joint powers agreement in place, but in the meantime, and, and yeah, there's practical parts of it too, as far as getting able to move the project along, I don't know all the nuances and details of that, but in the meantime, I think the risk is very low that there's going to be any ill-adverse impact to this district because I think a counterparty will have to do it.
I agree, it's wrong.
And I think we're wasting a lot of time on this conversation. We need to get into the meat and potatoes of these agreements, so.
Well, Mitch is here, if you have questions on the resolution.
Resolution. Again, but that gets to last week. It makes sense to deal with the joint powers before we talk about the resolution.
Correct.
Well, I, we had those wrong last week too.
Exactly.
I can't control.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I don't avail, Margaret's not available.
But it was on the agenda last week, it was on the agenda last week.
Right. That's my point.
But they were backwards, just kind of like the, well, we just have to wait for Margaret to, Margaret.
No, no, last week, consolidation one was on the agenda before the joint powers. If that's going to happen first, I think we need to discuss it first because then that's going to have an. that's going to have an effect and ramifications and ties to the consolidation agreement.
I don't, I get what, I understood what you were saying last week with that. I don't necessarily think that I cannot discuss the resolution for the consolidation separately from before we have the joint powers. I feel comfortable to ask my questions, so I would love to begin.
Okay.
The, so one of the things that was the sticking point that I would like to have clarification of is this resolution for, to move forward to begin, what is the wording? There's always specific wording in there. Is it planning the, planning the consolidation? It was...
I like to use the word potential consolidation.
So, thank you, so that's what was, so I guess that is where my question lies, is this resolution, because I spoke my opinion last week on kind of where I felt that the vote should be going, but that is apart from this resolution. This resolution is to allow to start planning what a potential consolidation could look like, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so I just wanted that to be very clarified, because I could certainly support then a resolution to start the process, because as I stated last week, I do believe that it is a very lengthy and time-consuming process that has to happen, and then we can figure out the voting piece that can be an ongoing conversation that our board can have, too.
Yeah, and so frankly, and, yeah, so, and the voting piece on how does it finally get approved is actually, that is not, that is not something that even this board would take up at this point in time. So the way it works under the statute, so, and anybody can look at this, this, this whole process of a potential consolidation is all governed by a state statute, it's section 123a point 48, it's a long line, it's a long way, Minnesota statute, section 123a point 48 lays out just a kind of excruciating detailed process of consolidating two school districts. Some of the, I would say that some of the statute is not, it's not very well worded, it's not a well-written statute in some parts, but, you know, if you read it enough times, enough times, you finally are able to, you know, decipher it. Also, Commissioner of Education's office has some really good materials online that kind of gives a checklist of the consolidation process that is actually a lot more user-friendly to try to read the statute. But, so basically, what this whole process starts with is two, two school districts looking at the possibility of consolidating, each board has to pass an initial resolution, and it has to be passed by both school boards, and essentially, that's the resolution that you have before you, is, it's really the initiating resolution. And once two school boards have passed the initiating resolution, that is a formal declaration by those two school boards that they want to start the process and go through the formal administrative process for a potential consolidation of the two school districts. So once the, if the initiating resolution is passed by both school boards, then that is a formal move to, for those two, two school districts to start that process. Again, it's the beginning of the process. What happens with those two resolutions is they are, they are sent down to the county auditor's office, then the county auditor's office will develop a plat, in other words, a plat of what the combined consolidated school district will potentially look like, basically a map. And there's also a formal statement, that's all, there's specific statutory language, and the county auditor having to lay out a specific statement addressing various issues relative to that plat. That plat is then eventually sent down to the Commissioner of Education, and that's really, when it goes to the Commissioner of Education, that's where the, really the nuts and bolts of the consolidation plan really get worked out, is basically the Commissioner of Education's office and that Commissioner's staff working hand-in-hand with the administration from both school districts to put together, you know, the real nuts and bolts and details of what the consolidated school district will look like, what the plan of consolidation will be, and, and, you know, that process, I think, you have a timeline up here, that process could take many, many months for the Commissioner's office to vet all of those details, and the end product of that is the Commissioner's office will, in conjunction with the plat, the Commissioner's office has to approve the plat, but in conjunction with that, the Commissioner's office also will formulate a detailed plan of the consolidation. That plat and plan will then come back before those school boards, and when they receive that official delivery of this packet from the Commissioner's office, both school boards have 45 days to act on that. And if either one of the school boards fails to act on it, the consolidation process is dead. So again, it takes two boards acting in tandem to have the process continue forward. So you get, you get this, all these details, this plat and plan approved by the Commissioner of Education, it's delivered to the two school districts, both school boards have 45 days to act on that. Now, at that point, that's really where each school board would make the decision, and it really is in the discretion of each school board on, does the school board itself want to approve that plan and going ahead with the consolidation, or does that school board, at that point in time, want to place it on the ballot and have the voters make that decision? That is a discretionary decision that that board gets to make at that time. So if, if, for example, this board said, well, we want to just approve it at the board level, and we approve the plan, and we're taking official action to approve the plat and the plan of consolidation, then you will, you will post official legal notice of that for 30 days, that the board has decided to take that action at the board level. And in that 30 days, then, the residents of this school district could, if they wanted, any resident could do it, they could start a petition process, and if they get a petition signed by 5% of the eligible voters in this district to have the matter placed on the ballot, then that would override the board's decision to just have it done at the board level, and that petition then, once it's properly approved and looked at, that petition, if they get signatures from 5% of the eligible voters in the district, if they accomplish that, then it goes on the ballot, it goes on the next inter-election ballot. If they, if that petition process never starts, or they don't get the requisite threshold, then the board decision to go ahead with the consolidation stands, and that goes into effect 30 days after you made that decision. And that's for most, so most school boards have to follow the same process. So the decision of, does it go to a vote of the people, or is it a, is it a vote that the board can just make on its own? That will be made not by this resolution, it is made strictly by, you have to follow the whole statutory process, and that actual decision will be made a number of months down the road.
Well, and I guess that was my dilemma last week, is that, in looking at putting it before the community for a vote, everyone kept saying, well, we need to know, we need to know the information, we need to know the plans, and that was, the resolution allows the plans to start taking fruition and moving forward to be able to go then, so people know what they're voting on and what the outcome could be.
Yeah, and frankly, if you tried to put that in this resolution, as far as how that's going to, it wouldn't even be valid, because that, under the statutory procedure, that vote by the school board, on whether the school board makes the final decision or whether the voters make the final decision, again, the school board can choose either one of those options, that really is made by the school board, that's the appropriate time in the statutory process, that would not be known.
Mitch, can you tell me, can you tell me where in the statute that is, and then I have a second question?
It's subdivision 11.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, second question, I have a third question. Where is that in the statute, and...
What is the eligible voter?
Well, I, I'll tell you, it does talk about eligible voters, so...
The estimate.
Yeah, I think that, it doesn't say registered voters, it says eligible voters, so...
The Secretary of State's office has, and they have the formula, algorithms of how they determine eligible, they know the registered and the ones who are, so it's whatever their official number is.
Right, I think that's probably right, yeah, that's how it would be looked at. So, in other words, you would have to quantify in the Edwood Gilbert school district, how many, at that time, whatever the, whatever the records are, the Secretary of State's office at the time, whatever the number of eligible voters in the school district, and then there would have to be, to trigger going to a ballot election, it would have to be 5% of that number, I don't know if that...
Before I forget my question, where in the statute does it say the timing of this, that this resolution takes place, and then you, the board decides whether it's going to be a vote?
Yeah, it's, it's in subdivisions 10 and 11.
10 and 11.
Yeah, so subdivision 10 talks about the 45 days to act on the approved plan from the Commissioner's office, and then the, and then the 30 days is in subdivision 11, as far as the 30 days to get a petition together.
No, not that, I meant, where is it, where's the timing that, because I don't necessarily agree about the timing of this? Where does it say that this resolution comes first, and then it goes to either a board vote of the board alone or the public?
It's subdivision 2, is the start of the 40, so subdivision 2 talks about the initiating resolution, and then subdivisions 2 through 9 talk about all the different things that have to be sorted out as part of the county auditor's office, the Commissioner's office, and then it goes to subdivisions 10 and 11.
I understand that. It just didn't make sense to me that why would you go through the whole process of the Commissioner and the plat and everything, all that time, money wasted, and then you would put it to a vote of the board, whether the board's going to vote, or the board's going to let the people vote, or the people petition.
See, and this is the only way that makes sense to me.
Right.
Because I'm, or else I'm like, what are people, we can't get them information that they're voting on if we, you know, to, what are we voting on, just to...
Yeah.
I mean, part of the confusion, excuse me, but part of the confusion in my mind was, and I know it's a draft, but we were provided a draft resolution on July 15th that contemplated explicitly...
Right.
...a vote on the November 5th ballot.
Right.
So, I mean, how did that happen? That even as a draft?
That was an initial draft that I had produced, but as I looked at the statute more, and then I actually looked at additional materials from the Commissioner's office, you know, there was clarity on exactly what the process was. So that was an early draft, I mean, basically, I looked, you wanted to get, we wanted to get something in your hands so you could start looking at a draft, but, but the process is, so that was an early draft, a rough draft, not the official draft.
So it's illegal.
It's not illegal, but it's, I mean, so...
If we would have passed it, it would have been an illegal...
I don't think that he used the word illegal, he said if it was in there, it would have been void, it would have mattered if it was in there, because it'd have to follow after.
Right, so, but looking at the statute further, and it is very dense when you get into most parts of the statute, looking at the statute further, and then looking at the materials from the Commissioner's office, it is clear that the timeline that I just laid out for you and the procedure is the correct procedure.
And that makes sense, I agree 100%.
There was some confusion on earlier rough draft and resolution, I apologize for that, but it was basically, you had this coming up, and Jeff had asked me to get something in your hands, so I sent over a rough draft.
Thank you.
So is Virginia's identical to this, except it, okay.
Yes.
And have they discussed the, discussed it like this, had any working sessions?
I have never attended a meeting with Virginia on this issue.
They haven't, they just passed it a little while ago.
So if they pass a resolution, and we are looking through it and find things that...
We want change.
We want change, how does that work then?
Yeah, they don't have to be, I don't think they necessarily have to be identical resolutions, but, you know, I guess it kind of depends on how substantive it should be.
Well, one of the things...
I mean, the reality is, I will tell you this, most of the language in this document really tracks basically the statutory, the different sections or subsections of the statute are really just tracked in this resolution, so, you know, there's, you know, so it's consistent with the statute.
One of, one of the things that, frankly, I think we need some discussion with at this board table is the makeup of the consolidated board, and are they at-large, all at-large positions, or, I know that was the recommendation of Gary Lee of the MSBA at our June joint meeting, but there's been no discussion at any level that I'm aware of since then, and then all of a sudden, it's been a resolution like it's been decided.
That's why we need discussion.
Well, Mitch, did you solely write this resolution up, or...
I solely wrote it based upon the statute, and then based upon, you know, the stuff that Gary Lee had put together from the joint meeting, that's what I based upon.
How did you decide to put at-large instead of boards and precincts?
Just, you know, based upon what Gary Lee had recommended at the joint meeting. It's really your discretion, I just, I just phrased it that way, but that was based upon the materials that Gary Lee had...
But, I mean, Gary Lee, MSBA is a trade organization, and they came, he came to tell us his opinion, right, and whatever, it could have, and then you put an opinion of not even...
But this is a draft.
No, no, I understand that, I'm just saying...
A resolution, you're free to amend it however you want.
No, no, I know, I'm Mitch, I'm not, you know, I'm backing off, I'm not, but the thing is, on some of the earlier drafts, either you or Margaret put in brackets, you could have this language, or you could have that language, and I, that may, maybe should have been put in there, because all of us aren't going to be, and I've been studying the statute, but it's so hard to study, just to know what our options were, and so to have put that in there, like, it was in there, now, now this other resolution has been taken out, too, and somebody decided which one, which of the whores to put in the resolution for us. And so we do have some options, but if you didn't read the statute or study it, you wouldn't have known that you have to put that...
Always on your one, you will.
Like the at-large, like there's something else here, too.
So the question on this, on this...
Like the board, yeah.
On this resolution, we talked about, you know, the at-large, I know it was recommended by Gary Lee that they be all at-large, but I don't think that would probably be a wise decision to have them all at-large, I mean...
And we, we received an email today that, there was some logic in that email, I don't know if anybody else read it, but, it was an email about breaking up the school district into precincts, so that each precinct would have a representative?
That's like wards, wards and precincts.
So is that, I mean, is that something that's doable, is that...
Yes.
Something we could have for discussion?
You could have some precincts, some wards, and at-large, you could have any combination.
I mean, I would be interested on where our current board, so I'm, I don't think I'm being Pollyanna about this, but maybe I am, I would be interested on where people live in our current school board, because I think we are dispersed amongst Edwood, Gilbert, and Fayle pretty equally, so I, I'm not...
That's at this point in time, other points in time.
Well, in, in... But I'm, but I think it's also on who the voters want representing their interests. So just because, I guess, I don't, I'm not making the assumption that we're, I don't know if people are concerned about this, because they're feeling that Virginia's larger, so it will sway more, our community has pretty good representation and voting representation to match Virginia's in any such way, and I feel comfortable that, I mean, I, so I don't, I don't know, I don't feel the same like that.
Well, and Gary, Gary said, you know, Gary said that it's, you know, it's, it's small details for the at-large part, but again, it's up for discussion, is that what we want to do, is an at-large, or is, is something like dividing up into precincts and doing something like that a better option? I mean, it's, there are ideas that have come from citizens, and I think, well, we could talk about that and see.
No, I'm not saying that necessarily, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say, I mean, we all know people, I, I've worked in Virginia, too, it's not, it's not a matter that I don't think that we'd have good representation, but if that's a concern of the citizens, I mean, it's something that I think maybe we could have, we should have a discussion about, are we good with being an at-large board, are we, would we want to divide it up into precincts and, and have representation from each area? I don't, it's up for discussion.
Mitch, I mean, on this particular resolution, I mean, is it necessary to even have that in here?
I think that the statute does require that.
In the initial resolution?
Yeah.
I mean, obviously...
Yeah, it does, it talks about, there's certain parts of the statute that, you know, are discretionary, and what needs to be in the initiating resolution, and, yeah, it does say the resolution must provide for election of board members from one of the following options, single-member districts, multiple-member districts, at-large, or a combination of these options. So, yeah, it is mandatory that that's in the resolution.
Matt, go ahead, then I have a comment.
Well, I was just going to say, I'm certainly not saying that I'm necessarily opposed to all at-large membership, but that's just a question that I thought that this court should contemplate before you...
Have a discussionable.
And, without having... And without having a gun pointed to our head that you got to pass this resolution.
Mm-hmm. So my, my point.
We all be on board about it. Yeah, my, my comment would be that you could end up at large down the road, three, four, or five years or whatever. You don't have to jump into at large and you can start winnowing. You can even designate so many from Virginia, so many from Evol-Gilbert, or you could start with the wards and the precincts. You could have some at large. That gives people the chance to get used to the idea and then all of a sudden you go at large. So those are real important things. Those are our options that we need to talk about.
That's what I want to go with there.
That's what, yeah, that's what Evol-Gilbert gives. And there's another.
Sorry. It, it's, you know, we could start it off that way and we obviously, right now, aren't that way where you have to have a certain number from Evol and a certain number from Gilbert. We're not that way anymore, but to start it off to ease into the, to the change, I mean, I don't see, again, it's just up for discussion.
I'm fine with at large, however, I could support Polly's plan of that.
And the other thing, it's a seven-member board. You could have a six-member board. And there are reasons to have seven-member boards and six-member boards. And you could change it at any time. You could have a vote of the people down the road.
I'll always support an odd number.
Well, that's fine, but if Virginia gets launched, it's fine. They have a six-member board. We had a six-member board, Gilbert had a six-member board, and when we combined, we had seven. But there, a lot of districts do have six.
I like seven.
Well, that's a opinion.
I know, that's what we're talking about.
That's all we need to talk about. That's another thing I'd like to talk about.
So what would be the recommendation to make changes in there? Any recommendations on changes to that?
The big question is the at-large is what I'm hearing.
Yeah.
Right. I mean, I like Polly's plan of, you know, weaning it down between the districts and when, and then, and when the door's open, then it becomes all at large.
But subdivision four, how do you have equal? If you have four from Virginia and three?
You could do that if you want to, but you might not want that.
Three, three and at large?
Yeah.
You could do that, three, three and at large too.
Two, two and three at large?
That's right, see? There's infinite.
There's infinite combinations.
Well, and it says that there could be a combination of these options.
So I think we need to mull that over before we come to any.
I mean, it does, yeah, it does, I'm looking at the statute right now and it does indicate that.
All right, so we know that we can agree.
We can do the combination.
That decision. Do you have any other questions for Mitch? I do need to get Margaret on the line.
I mean, I mean, we need to, I mean, we don't need to act on this, but let's, let's get this resolution passed so we can at least start the process for a potential consolidation.
Well, we need to, we need to work those things out.
I know, but I'm just saying.
No, you're in a hurry.
Before we can, you know, I mean.
I understand that you need to talk about that, but do you have any other specific questions for Mitch to clarify?
Yeah.
Get Margaret on the phone.
Well, I do not specifically.
I do not.
I probably will, but I can't think of it right now. We might have to have another discussion. There was something about going from 13-member consolidated board to what, nine, then to seven?
It was that transition that was proposed, which I liked.
Yeah, that's proposed, but.
I like that transition. It made sense to me actually on how you would go and do, go ahead and do that while members were able to continue to serve out their term.
What are other either whores that I'm missing that we had choices of in the statute? Off the top of your head.
Well, I think what it was, was the, that was on the.
Oh, I know.
It was on.
I know, on levies.
Is on the levies.
On bonding and loans, right?
And that, that, that information is actually discretionary. It does not have to be in the initiating resolution. And ultimately, I think a lot of those details will be sorted out. That's really, I think, part of the nuts and bolts work with the commissioner's office and doing with the finance staffs from both districts. So it doesn't have to be in the resolution. Again, it was just, it was just more verbiage and more detail. And that particular financial stuff gets pretty complicated.
But that's pretty important stuff.
But it's discretionary, and I think the reason it's discretionary that it doesn't have to be in the initiating resolution is due to the complexity of it and the fact that there will be an entire vetting process with the commissioner's office and sorting out all, all of those details and the work at the end.
But this board gets that option and then we submit it to the commissioner to decide if that's okay or not. So it's not that the commissioner won't do that. So we need to make those decisions. Those are big ones.
Well, yeah, but you don't have to make it as part of the initiating resolution.
When will we make it? And would that be part of the consolidation planning process?
It could be part of the consolidation plan.
I don't know. I think I would want it in here. You pass something like this, I think those are biggies about if you share your obligations or if each district has their own. It was in the draft and that was taken out. No. So those are biggies, real biggies too.
And I agree, and that's also where I would think that that would be part of a, a little bit more complex plan than the resolution.
No, I would want it in here. I don't want that.
For proceeding. It's a plan.
That's not a plan. That's a, that's a document. That's a contract. That, that's a, this is a consolidation resolution.
There's a reason that it's optional to be in there or not.
It's not, it's not optional to be in there.
To be in the resolution.
It's optional what you choose according to statute. Why wouldn't you want it in the resolution?
No, it's optional. The, the whole thing is actually, and I can look at it, it's actually whether you need to have that in the initiating resolution is optional and that is in.
Subdivision 2, 123A, 48.
Yeah, that's right. Subdivision 2, subpart B, the resolution may propose the following.
The bonded, B1?
And then it's, and then it's subparts 1 through 5.
Yeah, B1, the bonded debt of the component districts.
Yeah, but it says, again, the resolution may propose the following.
It's not required.
It doesn't say that it has to be in the initiating. There's certain parts of the statute that say that the initiating resolution must contain this information. There's parts of the statute that say the initiating resolution may contain this information. So it's really discretionary on what you include and what you not include. And if you look at items 1 through, 1 through 3, you know, that, you know, you get into some pretty dicey finance stuff that I think, that's a level of detail that I think in the end, as part of putting together the, the whole plan of consolidation that includes a lot of financial information, that, you know, the commissioner will do the heavy lifting for the respective school districts in that regard. You don't have to have it in the initiating resolution. You can if you want.
Yeah, that's right. You may put it in there. And you know, to me, it's pretty simple. There's three areas. Are you going to share bonded debt? Or are you going to have the originals, you know, and taxpayers? Second one is about loans and the outstanding loans obligations. The third is your levy referendums. To me, that's simple. Are you going to, are you going to, are all the taxpayers in the newly consolidated district going to pay for, you know, all of it? Or are you going to keep your own? Because Evol-Gilbert, we have two, one year left on our excess levy referendum. Virginia just passed theirs. Theirs goes for seven years. Does that mean then that Evol-Gilbert residents without, without voting might pay, have to pay, you know, that, that share of their obligations and any bonding that they have for their retirees or anything? So to me, it should be in there. No, it's just yes or no. You can work up the details, but that's a pretty simple question, that decision to make.
I don't think so because I think you actually have to have the information correct and make sure that it's all being gathered and given to us from each school district.
Well, wait, wait, that's a detail. Wait, just let me see. You get, all of us at this table right now could probably say, do we want to combine all of our obligations and debts? Or do we want them to remain separate? And then you pay them down as separate districts like Evol and Gilbert did when we consolidated? We each set up. I think we could say that right now. Now you work out the details of how much money that is and blah, blah, blah. But that's, those are pretty simple decisions, but important ones. That's my opinion. I think it should be in here.
I, I, I'm with Kelly. I mean, we, we need to know what those are, but it's just, to me, it's a matter of, of timing and I think that would come out in the law. And frankly, I need to get more educated on what our respective obligations of our districts are myself.
And, and do you want to take on Virginia's obligations or do they want to take on ours? It doesn't matter if it's a, if it's a hundred dollars or a hundred million dollars. Would you want to take on their obligations or not?
Well, it depends on what those obligations are. I mean, if it's a referee, if, if it's money that's going to go to benefit our students, then I look at that differently than if someone ran up a credit card bill and is asking us to pay them off.
I agree. I don't think it's black and white and I don't want to treat it as black and white and I'm not. I mean, especially for, for people sitting here, always saying, no rush, no rush. I feel like that's rushing and it's not necessary for the resolution.
Yeah, I agree.
Allow the consolidation process to work out that stuff and then that's when we put it before a vote. I mean, I just, it's not necessary to have it in there and.
I think it's important that taxpayers who would not have a chance to vote on something would end up having to pay for something else. But the other thing, okay, Mitch, what would this, when those things, if those things were added at a later date, would that be an addendum? Would it be to this, to this contract or what, what are these called, codicils when you add something?
Did you say there was a separate resolution?
I think once you pass the initiating resolution, that part of the process is kind of behind you. And then, and then it would really be, then you would be more into the, the plan of consolidation that the commissioner's office is formulating where you might get into, you know, more of those details on how those things will be done. So if it's, so if it's not specifically included in the, in the initiating resolution, then, you know, I think it would default to the proposed plan that the commissioner will put together, that then would have to go to a subsequent vote that I talked about earlier.
So that decision would be made down the road? It could be made down the road or it could be made now, put in this resolution? And you're saying it would be worked out in the commissioner's process?
Well, I mean, the commissioner would look at all those details and, and I'm assuming as part of a proposed plan of consolidation that when that, when that final plan is, is developed by the commissioner and packaged up and presented to each board, we're going to be able to look at those details on how all of that meshing of finances will happen. And it'll be up to a board at that point in time, if that's unsatisfactory to that board at that time for, you know, whatever reason it may be, then you, you have the option of rejecting the plan at that time. You can reject the plan and send it back to the commissioner for more work and link forward a new plan that, because remember, both boards have to pass it for the consolidation that will forward. So if there was something in that plan that, you know, if the board at that time felt it was patently unfair to the taxpayers in Evol and Gilbert and surrounding area, then that board at that point certainly would have a prerogative to reject the plan.
Margaret, look at this. Margaret's calling.
Look at the resolution?
No.
Yeah, she didn't draw it up. It was Mitch's firm.
Margaret, is the joint power agreement?
Yeah.
Anything else for Mitch?
Thanks, Mitch.
Yeah, I think whatever you decide as a board as far as what you want the final consolidation resolution, initiation, you know, who can look like this.
Do you have the notes then for some wording for the, the adjustment of the at-large?
Yeah.
Okay.
I took notes on that, but you're looking at maybe a different concept.
Thank you.
And when did you have that prepared?
Well, I, I mean, I don't, you didn't decide on anything. It's not like.
No, we need to mull it over.
But it's not like you're looking at maybe at the time of consolidation or, or no, when you, when you whittle down to that final.
Seven.
Seven or six-member board that you would be looking at. For example, three precincts in Evol-Gilbert, three precincts in Virginia, and then at-large members, that kind of.
Yeah.
I like that.
I like that.
Yeah, I do too.
Okay. So yeah, that, that's pretty easy.
Okay, very good.
Thanks.
Thanks, Mitch.
Either you want me to stick around or?
You can, if you want to hang out, you can hang out.
Yeah, they relate to each other, so.
Margaret, this is Jeff and you are live with our school board right now. And they're going to ask you some questions about the joint power agreement.
All right, sounds good.
All right, here we go.
Margaret, who's got the first question?
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll start. Um, I, to, to me, you know, when I look at this joint powers agreement, I think the most important thing that it does first and foremost is it establishes a corporate board and kind of goes through the rest of the stuff. But when I, I read, when we get to, I don't know what page to call it on. When you get to section 3, the corporate board.
Cooperative board.
Went, the cooperative board, thank you. When, when I read that with the, the version that was handed or was in our board packet to consider at last Tuesday's meeting.
The numbers.
It was very confusing. And, and I asked Mr. Carey, I said, this is confusing. And he agreed and said, yep, I caught that. And he gave us at before the meeting, a version that had change, some changes to it. Um, and then after, when we were having a discussion, we got what I thought was a red line version comparing version that we were provided with before the meeting to the version that we were given at the table. Um, until I started looking at the red line version and, and I, I mean, specifically when I look at the 3A representatives, it, it confuses me when it says the six representatives shall include the superintendent of each member district as ex officio members and three other voting members from each member district who must be current school board members. To me, that's two plus three plus three. That's eight, not six.
Yes, how it reads is it, it reads that a superintendent is also a voting member.
And then to get even, I mean, more confusing for me, and I'm easily confused, obviously, of when I look at quorum.
Yeah.
Version A.
Yeah.
Just says a quorum shall consist of a majority of the voting members of the corporate board with no mention of any number. Version D says it consists of a minimum of four members.
Now it's five.
Version C, red line version supposedly says five members. What is it?
A quorum is a, is half plus one.
I mean, yes, with, with four members, that means you have six or seven members in your board. If the quorum is five, that means you have eight or nine.
Okay, so, um, the version I have on that, um, 3F has a minimum of four members.
Well. Margaret, there was a, there was a version, because our bond attorney from Dorsey had concerns that the, the version, the last version that you and Trevor had worked on had superintendents as voting members. And that was concerning to the bond attorney. So I just, I, in conversation with the superintendent from Virginia, we just decided that we shouldn't have superintendent voting members either way. So we, we modified that part of it and didn't change. The, the red version that was sent from Dorsey had five on it because I think they were assuming the two superintendent voting members being eight. But if we weren't on there, we switched it to four, but didn't change the last, I didn't catch the last sentence in 3F. So I mean, that, that part of it's my fault.
Okay, so, I mean, when Trevor and I were going back and forth, I guess maybe it wasn't clear. We, we were, um, having six members, that were, and that was the three members from each member district.
Yep.
And then the two superintendents were ex officio members, meaning they can't vote.
Excuse me, but ex officio doesn't, in my understanding, is ex officio doesn't mean you can't vote. Ex officio means you hold that seat as a result of the position you have. Ex officio members, again, I believe, because I've been an ex officio member on a board where I've had a vote.
It can mean both, though.
Yes, it can be either. You need to specify ex officio non-voting member, or an ex officio voting member.
So, which is, which is fine, right Margaret? I mean, we can just change that to say-
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, I think, if you look at 3A, it says each member district is ex officio members, and then three other voting members. So, I, I think what the, what the language is trying to say was the superintendent or ex officio non-voting, and then there are three other voting members from each member district. I don't think anybody is in dispute with what you're saying. Everybody's in agreement. Virginia's in agreement, you're in agreement. Um, and so, if we want to change that language a little bit, I don't think, I, I think everyone agrees, the superintendents are not voting members.
I think it's cleaner if we put in non-voting members.
Yep.
Then everybody knows what, what it all means, it's more clear.
Yeah, I think that's, that's, that's fine.
And I would suggest striking the word "other," instead of saying three other voting members, three voting members.
From each district.
Are you looking at today's one now?
For the red line? It's on today's, and it's on the red. The other part. It's on both.
Just look at the one I ended up, or just say the line.
One of them says a quorum is five, and I'm not finding that document.
That was on the red line.
That's the red line.
That's the one that came from Dorsey.
Right here.
So I would agree on the other of the wording of that. I don't necessarily, I think removing it isn't going to take away from the intention of it for three, three voting members from each district.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
So then we, we just need to put where it says-
Ex officio.
-superintendent of each member district is non-voting ex officio member. We just need to put "non-voting," and then strike the other, and then I think we might be okay.
I have a larger question, though. Who, how, how is it determined that there would be a six-member board and two or three alternates, or one or two alternates? Why was that number picked?
No, I don't know. I, I wasn't involved in the original version. I think the original was drafted by your bond counsel.
No, the original was drafted by, uh, he's out in Fergus Falls. Can't think of his name off the top. But that, that was the original draft, and he, it was just a draft. I mean, those, the numbers within here are open for-
Mike Ringo, was it?
No, it was, uh, Josh Tem- Temberton.
Oh, okay.
What would, are you thinking of a different numbers?
Well, I think it's inconsistent with the consolidation language resolution, because the consolidation one starts with 13, it goes down to nine, then to six or seven. Uh, there's many ways you can do it. You could have a 13-member board, and I know what you said, how, at one meeting Kelly says, "Well, that's why we don't, you know, have all these people, because, you know, things don't get done." But, sit, now, just take, for example, a 13-member board. Um, it's kind of the way the other consolidation went, but you have seven members that can make a decision of a 13-member board. You can have six people that don't agree, and you can still pass it. So what's cumbersome about that? Okay? That's just a simple majority. Um, you could have, you could have, like, Evlith Gilbert did. Um, we had two, we had two boards, we had the full Evlith board, we had the full Gilbert board, you know, each had six members, and then you each vote on the same, same resolution. And if you had yes, yes, it passes; if you had no, no, it didn't; if you had yes, no, it didn't pass. Now that's, that gives you full representation of all board members and all elected officials, um, people that they voted for, and, you know, you represent. I just don't think, I don't think that it's right to not have, to start winnowing down representation from elections, from the public, from the people, into a smaller group of people, because it is workable. It is very workable to have, um, you know, we're all elected, and somebody wouldn't be on, on the board. Either one person or two people would not be on this joint powers board. And, and this joint powers board not only gets to make decisions about the academy, they get to make decisions according to these resolutions on the elementary schools. And at, and until you're consolidated-
Yep, it's the Evlith Gilbert.
Go ahead, yeah.
So, just the construction of the elementary school.
Right.
There's nothing else about the elementary school. The member districts still run their own elementary schools.
That was, that's a big thing, though, about the decisions about the construction, and maybe the design. So we would have a joint powers board making decisions for both the Evlith Gilbert Elementary School and the Virginia. I don't even know if that's legal, that you have, you can't, you don't have the, the board, the full board of, of a district making decisions for its own elementary until you're consolidated.
So, one thing I could say is that, and a lot of times, the problems that you have with these joint powers boards, you as board members are so busy with all of the things that you do, and then it's another meeting that you have to go to. And when you have, um, the full membership of both boards, and then you have a quorum based on that number, sometimes it's difficult to get everyone, to get enough people to have these meetings. And the way that it should work is that whoever is nominated to be the representative to appear on the joint powers board would have, you know, they're going to know what's on the agenda, they're going to have discussed it with the board, and gotten their, you know, the input from their individual boards, and then they're bringing it to the joint board to discuss.
No.
And I think, um, you know, it's equal representation, so you each have three. It's not unwieldy, so there's, you know, there's six. And you're going to have to come to an agreement with the other school districts, because neither of you have a majority.
Well, a quorum is seven, so would it be really hard to get seven out of 13 members to a, a meeting? And then, wouldn't that also cause, if you have joint meetings, and then each district has their separate meetings just for their own, for their own business, until you're consolidated, that's double meetings? And, you know, we've had members around this table say, "Oh, I'm so busy," you know, and we, working sessions and committee meetings. Now you're just going to put another, you're going to put another meeting, if you're on the joint powers board, in addition to your own Evlith Gilbert, or the Virginia's, their, whatever. Or if you have just joint, you have joint meetings all the time, and you might have , um, joint powers, or, um, the joint powers meeting, one, one meeting of the month, and then you can have your separate ones, the second meeting of the month. I mean, Virginia's been working that way anyway. They've had a working session, and we tried it for a while, too. One working session and one meeting, or whatever. You could have all joint meetings, so everybody hears everything, and you could do separate district business, and you can do joint business. I don't think it's cumbersome at all, but cut down on the meetings, actually.
I got, I, I'm not opposed to the three and three. I, I think it's almost like when people are going into negotiations, and people on the negotiations committee, that you're not speaking to individually as representing our board, you're speaking to the whole of the board, and bringing that information and going back and forth. And that's how I would see this happening. Um, and I don't think, I feel like, I don't want to do a disservice to our current operations and making sure that we are still managing our school district, and, and I also know that this is going to be a different amount of time, and I just, I don't think necessarily cutting one of our meetings out and then saying that we're going to move that to the joint powers, and then we're going to continue to keep our, our second meeting of the month. I don't, I don't think that would necessarily-
First of all, committee meetings, you don't make decisions at committee meetings. You're representing the full board, and then you bring it back to the full board for a decision. So that's a different, that's a, that's not an equal analogy.
Well, but I think it's the, it's the understanding of the same, and just what, that is what Margaret just said, is that the understanding would be that people are communicating this with the board, and there's some written language in there, too, that when there's communication happening, that you're communicating that with your board and bringing that forward, that you're not just operating in a, in a silo.
I disagree.
But that is the decision maker.
I disagree, and you disagree with me, that I think every board member was elected, and they need a voice, and it would not be cumbersome. Because it's been done before. Look at our legislature, they've got hundreds of people, and, and it works.
Our state was shut down for indecumbers, so.
So, I mean, the other thing I would say is that, um, you know, Virginia was involved in, uh, there were lots of attorneys involved, or the course of, of all the different things that you needed to, to go forward with this. But, I mean, Virginia, um, agreed to the six representatives as well. And so, if you don't agree with that, then there's going to have to be negotiations with them, because that's what, you know, that was kind of the joint agreement, that the boards are each going to approve.
But wait, I understand that Virginia hasn't discussed this yet, so how could their board have agreed on this?
Well, the representative of the board, in the sense that superintendent and their attorney-
Oh, that's interesting.
I think that's where some of the frustration is here, is we haven't had these discussions. And I'm with Kelly, I don't disagree with the six, six-person joint powers board, but I think that's something that we should have talked about.
Because there are options, there's more options.
Yes.
And I think we can all agree that, yes, this conversation should have been happening sooner rather than after the fact. I mean, I think that's, we're all in agreement, but here we are.
All right.
And I think part of the issue, as I understand it, was that bond counsel was saying, "We need to get this done, we need to get this done." Um, something with respect to the bonds, and I'm not bond counsel, so I don't know to answer that question, but I think that's what the rush of getting this done was.
Yeah, you're correct. In the sale of the bonds, it was stipulated that there would be joint powers agreement in place.
Let's move off of that one for now, if, if anybody wants to still talk about it. But look at the term. It will continue in effect until the members mutually agree. So that means that one, I mean, not that it would happen, I just don't like this language, that both would have to agree if you wanted to terminate? It's like, "I can't get divorced with you unless you'd agree with me?" I guess, well, I would, or I don't know. That's not a good analogy. I had a problem with that. And then appointments, um, right to freely remove and replace each appointment for any, uh, any time, for any reason, you remove a board member or appointee, vacancy, there's just a lot of things to talk about.
I mean, I, you know, I, the one that you mentioned, number two, the term, this agreement shall continue in effect until a member district mutually agrees to terminate the agreement. I mean, I think, I, I think that's, I mean, we're entering into an agreement here, and that's just basically saying that, you know, we're committed to this agreement. You know, I don't see anything negative about that one.
Well, that was a small one, but I mean, it's just, it's one of hundreds.
And, and the appointments, and again, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but, you know, that's where, you know, the first agreement, agreement we were to vote on said January 1st, you would make an appointment. That's why, it's like, what's the rush? We got five months to determine who's going to sit on that board. Then version two at the table says August 12th, then version three, red line version, says January 1st, then version four, today, says August 12th.
Where are you reading August 12?
August 12th, today.
And I guess, yeah, my understanding with that is that, uh, they wanted in place, to get the board in place, in order to make, you know, whatever preliminary decisions need to be made for the high school.
That certainly gives some credence to the urgency to get it done.
But some of the other language, I, I can understand that. You know, that's very reasonable and logical, but I don't, I don't agree with the decision-making power for each, while you're still separate districts, and you're cooperating until you consolidate, that this board gets to make those construction and design decisions, or whatever, this smaller board, unless it's the whole 13 members somehow configured to make those. I don't, Virginia probably doesn't want our board, or, or joint powers board with three or four Evlith Gilbert people making decisions for their Roosevelt, or whatever they're going to call it, and vice versa. That doesn't sit with me.
That's, I mean, that's an assumption, though, because I'm, I'm okay.
What's, what, okay.
I'm okay with three other members looking at what's best for students, as a whole, and as an entity, and-
Take for example, take, take for example, this board, that joint board is going to decide whether we have two more sections in our Evlith Gilbert Elementary because of the kids in, um, Midway, or are they going to go to Virginia because they want them to be, be in Virginia, so their school has two more sections, or has the sections that they have now, so they don't go to this. I know you're going to be consolidated in, in a period of time, but that could be a pretty contentious decision to make. I think all board members need to make that, and not just representatives of board members. I think we need to represent the people who elected us, because we all have different constituencies. Some of them overlap, the people who voted for us, and some don't. And I don't think they should be left out.
And I think that, that would be in my thought, in who we would be putting forward with the three members, honestly. So, I would not want the, the three similar viewpoints to be on the board. I don't think that would be correct in any such way.
It's very subjective how each person would, would decide that, and then how it would work out.
I think it's equal representation. I don't see no problem with it whatsoever.
It could be, uh-
That's my opinion.
And Evlith Gilbert has seven members, uh, Virginia has six. So three, three out of six is a higher percentage than three out of seven, and that's representing our people, but they have, I understand.
It's three members and one alternate.
I understand, but we have a seven-member board.
But-
Three out of seven is a smaller number than three out of six.
But it's one vote. That's irrelevant, it's one vote.
It could be a tiebreaker.
Yeah, but it would be three and three on this board. Three and three from each dist, I mean-
That's right. I'm just saying, you get three representatives from Evlith Gilbert, we have a seven-member board. That's, that's shorting, it's a different percentage.
I think that's just-
Three out of six is 50%, three out of seven is 40, 43%.
I'm not disagreeing with your math, I'm just saying, each person has, has one vote.
It's just to them.
So, each district will have three votes.
That's right, well, we have a seven-member board.
Well, and then, I mean, from Virginia's perspective, I mean, they're putting in the majority of the money for the high school career academy, and so they could have said, "Since we're putting in 65% of the money, we want more representation on the cooperative board."
No, no, no.
They didn't say that, they said, you know, we're-
That doesn't wash.
We're fine with having equal representation in Evlith Gilbert on making the decisions. Neither of you has greater representation, you have the exact same representation on the board. You need to make decisions about their elementary schools, just like they get to make decisions about yours. Now, in reality, probably what will happen is the school boards will defer to the other, you know, as far as those, most of those decisions.
That's a probable, I like it, in black and white, in a contract. This is a legal binding thing, you know, I don't like, want a probably, or possibly, or maybe, personally.
Well, so, if Virginia's school board members make it difficult for your elementary school, or do you think that you don't agree with, you know, you will do the same things with respect to the Virginia school.
I'm not pitting-
And then everyone's best interest, based upon how this agreement is written.
I'm not pitting a district against a district. Now, I'm not pitting one district against the other, I really am not, just like Kelly said, it's not us or them. It's, um, like I say, I'm not even sure if it's a legal thing.
I thi, I think it's having faith that the six members will do what's best for our students. It's what we've been working on for two years. I don't, so, okay.
Any questions for Margaret?
No, I'm good.
Just to hang on a second.
Hang on, Margaret.
Okay. The, um, joint powers board can issue bonds and obligations, um, while you're still separate districts?
I'm going to assume, Margaret, that that's going under the assumption that this agreement last passed construction, if it was actually, yeah.
Another assumption?
My assumption.
Well, it's an important one.
Of what that means.
I don't know, I have other questions, but my head's spinning right now.
Well, it's the opportunity, because we've got the attorney here, so if you've got questions, let's ask them.
My resolution said one or more meetings, not stipulate these, but, but it's very complicated, and this is our first crack at it, and so, you might not have questions, maybe you do, maybe you don't, but-
Section 4F, Margaret, I, I would, I mean, how did those numbers, 35% and 65% respectively, come up?
Good question. Good question.
Uh, now, those were numbers that were negotiated between the school district. We had a lot of different, um, ways that, that, that was the easiest way. We talked about, um, when I was negotiating with Trevor, about doing it, just going straight, student enrollment, you know, um, on Virginia resident districts and Evlith Gilbert resident district, you know, um, the numbers. It got compli, complicated with all the open enrollment and all- It got compli- complicated with all the open enrollment and all of that. And so ultimately, that's the percentage that exists now, you know, approximately. And so, you know, those numbers were agreed on between the school districts. It's actually an easy way to do it. And I didn't object to it, and I don't think Jeff objected to it, because it's fair to Evelyn Gilbert.
Well, the enrollment numbers are different than resident, resident pupils are different than your pupils served, okay? Virginia has.
We're talking about who's going to the high school career academy, so it's going to be a joint, you know, a joint high school. So, you know, how do you determine? Do you look at, you know, where they were enrolled, you know, where their residence is before they go to this joint high school? Do you look at if they've got open enrollment students in another, you know, let's say they live in Evelyn Gilbert, the family goes to Virginia, you know, who gets those students? So it does, it still gets complicated when you're, you're joining districts, but yet you're still separate, and how you figure that number out. And so, when we talked about all of the different scenarios, it seemed the easiest to just do straight percentages. And the idea was that the consolidation would happen, you know, fairly quickly.
Which would make, which would make the, yeah, right.
Okay, go ahead. Did I miss that part?
Well, you, you said exactly what I was going to say. I mean, if there was a consolidation, the sections would move point.
The whole agreement's a moot point if there's a consolidation.
So, Margaret, can you explain what the purpose is for, for F, for the 65 versus 35%? What the purpose of that piece is?
So, so right now, before you're consolidated, there's going to be program, there's going to be costs with running the high school career academy. And you've got to figure out, you know, this joint powers entity, you know, needs funding. And so, you know, normally, funding comes from enrollment, but, you know, it's consolidated. High school is not an entity, so the, the money is still going to come to the member districts. And so how you're going to, how each, the member districts are then going to fund this high school, that's what that number is based on. So that, you know, all the teachers, all the costs that go with running a high school, who's going to fund that?
So then Virginia would be funding 65%, and Evelyn Gilbert would be funding 35% of both costs?
Right, exactly.
If it opens or not consolidated.
Yep, through a school levy.
If it opens, then you're not consolidated, right. The hope would be that you would be.
That's a levy, that's not what your general fund balances are. So that would be, it says levy, okay, that's extra money from taxpayers.
Any other questions for Margaret? Everyone's good?
Thank you, Margaret.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
Right, Mr. Chair, how would you like to proceed? You identified a couple of things that you want to have further discussion on. Would you like to do that in a study session prior to a vote? Do you want to do that right now? Do you want to do that later? Let me know what you want me to say.
Would the board be comfortable if we did it in a study session prior to the vote?
I mean, you have to understand that, I mean, like, for instance, Matt's issue of the, the language for the membership. I mean, you can change that before you vote. Just because I threw a piece of paper, I mean, it doesn't mean that.
So the joint powers agreement, we would clean up the wordage as in.
Ex officio.
Yeah, so we would see ex officio, non-voting members.
Removing others.
Removing other. And we would keep the three-member board, or the three-member plus one alternate the same.
And I disagree. If I have other comments or questions, who do I direct them to before we take action on this? I would, I would like another, and a quick one, because I know this is important, to get this done quick. I'd like another session like this.
Oh, you would have, you would schedule that, next session?
Yes. Study, but no voting, yeah.
Before a board meeting as well?
I'd like that, thanks.
If necessary.
And then would, would the intent be after another working session, when we have a regular meeting on August 12th, then to vote on the joint powers, vote, vote on the consolidation resolution? And then also appoint the three members to the joint powers board?
If that's the direction you want to go, you can do that.
You can do that.
And if it's on the agenda, for whatever reason, if, from the study session prior, if there's anything that is questionable about proceeding, that can be delayed versus adding it on to the agenda at the last minute.
So is there anything in the resolution that you wanted to see consolidation resolution cleaned up? Or any wordage changed on that, Mitch?
Yeah, what I have to go down, concept of the three and three and one, I wrote that down, I scribbled it into the draft resolution.
Okay.
Mitch, what's a typical time period that, that process to the commissioner and the plat, and all that being drawn up? Is I read something, at least five months?
Yeah.
Or more?
I would say, no, five.
Okay, that's.
And that doesn't include, like, the planning part that the school districts themselves have to work on?
Well, this is the process.
Yeah, I think as far as the consolidation process, that's rolled it through the commissioner's office, and then ends, ends in that approved plan and plat that comes back before you.
What I'm getting at is, what I'm getting at is, a joint powers agreement would probably be at least five months, at least.
Yeah, and even if you, and even if, when you take that consolidation process to its final conclusion, vote on, let's just say, the board's vote on going ahead with the consolidation, and it doesn't, or it would be, there's going to be, there's, you know, part of that plan will be effective date of the consolidation. So it could be, you know, it could be, maybe they're going to make it effective on July 1st or something like that, following the actual passage of it. So there'll be some lag time there before it actually goes in.
So does that mean, then, that that joint powers agreement and board would last until
That's right.
the effective date, not just the vote of? Could be.
I did have one quick question on the consolidation. So if, you said we have 45 days, each board has 45 days to make a decision on that.
When it comes back from the commissioner.
Yeah, when it comes back from the commissioner. If, but that doesn't necessarily mean, so if we, if the board decides to put it be for the public, that public vote doesn't have to be within that 45 days?
No.
Okay.
If the board decides, if the board decides, if, if this board decides, for example, well, we don't want to make the decision at the board level, we want to put it on the ballot. Yeah, then you would have to go through your normal process of calling an election for the purpose. It might be, depending on the timing, it might be on the general election ballot in November, or it might be a special election. But you'd have to go through your formal process to call an election on that.
Okay.
And when you say, should the board choose to move forward through a resolution? And then if there is a valid petition, that then the vote would be at the next general election?
Well, no, I think it would be if, if, if the petition triggers the necessity of an election, then I think, you know, the board would have to go through the process of deciding when that election's going to be.
You'd have to work backwards from a statutory of how many, there's the window, I mean, say, it might not be able to be done in this November, because 30 days before the election, you have to do this, and 60 days, you, as the clerk, no, and you have to.
You have to go through your, your normal election cycle process. So, yeah, so you, at that point, if a petition comes forward to place it on the ballot, you'd have to look at those timing procedures, and how quickly can the school legitimately notice an election and get it on a ballot, and go through all those things, so that it does take some time.
But it's not necessarily a general election?
No, not necessarily a general, it could be a special election.
Who do we ask a question about, it says consolidation timeline, this document?
I was going to bring that up. Are we going to talk about that at all, or?
One of my questions is, I see it's identified that building construction completed by 2025 for the Roosevelt. What are the anticipated building dates for the, the Evelyn Gilbert Elementary?
Evelyn Gilbert Elementary, follow us well, it should be about two years out, so that will be in the fall of 2021.
22.
21?
21.
Um, the high school the following year, in the fall of 2021.
Oh, there you go.
And then, but actually, 24, I don't remember, Roosevelt could be here two years right then.
Okay, so the 2025 is 2020.
2021.
So then would deconstruction, which is just a fancy word for destruction, be then one year earlier, 2023?
Well, it could be whatever the board decides. I mean, we told, we, you know, the date was, we would have a period of time after we dictated that.
I just see it was one year before.
It would, it would be whatever you want it.
Has site been determined for the Evelyn Gilbert Elementary? Has that, has the site been determined for the Evelyn Gilbert Elementary yet?
Yes, but we haven't purchased it, I'm a gentleman.
Oh, do you consider looking into a site behind the Gilbert School Mall?
No. That site, that site A was discussed, I think, at a board workshop some months ago. And I think the consensus was site A was the most logical spot for elementary school to go.
So are you saying you negotiated a price for, oh, what?
We're not that far down, no.
Oh, I thought that's what you were implying.
They just identified, right, they just identified, oh, we're right.
Yeah, somewhere between 35 and 45 acres, trying to make sure the building fits on site A, where the wetlands are, where the rock outcroppings are. So just preliminary meetings with the city, no real discussion, no purchase agreements or anything that's been made until a step further.
So I, I, I thought you had just alluded to, though, that you are in negotiations for that extra piece, the spectrum piece?
Yes.
For the high school?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so that's just still in that process of negotiating a price?
That's correct. I think the attorneys are starting to talk now, and I think some agreements are being put together for the board, or boards, however that works, to consider.
So how about the wetland delineation studies, and then it going for approval? What part of that process is it?
So, well, right now, the wetland delineation is done in terms of determining where it's at, and the level and the grade of the wetland. The next step is the engineers, architects and engineers need to do a building layout, and the civil engineers need to get pretty far along in the process before they can submit how much, or how many acres, or whatever, wetlands need to be either replaced, relocated, or buy wetland credits. But we can't determine that until design gets much further along.
And then what process does that go to the Army Corps?
What, what process?
Does it, what, what part, when does it go to the Army Corps of Engineers? Do they give approval?
After the civil engineers have all their water calculations done, so it's going to be a while from now.
Do they actually have to give approval, or do they give recommendations, or is that like?
They give you, you know, they give, there's a formal approval process.
Okay, approval or not approval. One more question. What, what part does the water, soil, and land conservation department have in this? Do they have approval or not approval, or just they work with you?
They work with us.
Okay, no formal approval needed?
Not in that, regardless.
Okay.
A lot of other state permits that have to be.
How many acres required, actually, for an elementary, John?
Well, on a, I'll just say, on a nice cornfield or hay site, you could probably build an elementary the size of Evelyn Gilbert on about 15, probably more like 20 acres.
20 acres?
That's typical, but with the rock outcroppings on site, and most of the sites around here, but on site A, and where we could put ponds and elevations, that's why it's going to be closer to 40 acres.
Well, I guess I'm looking at that one area that never dipped it into consideration then. You have access coming in around 37, going into Gilbert, you're not crossing 400 in traffic. You have the other access coming in from the train, around 37. And you got a straight shot up to the, there's 30 acres back there.
Tom, Tom, I, I, May 14th, the people voted. And if site A, I mean, site.
But who voted? What people wanted?
No, I mean, but the citizens voted to put the elementary out on the, out by the high school. I guess I don't know why we're talking about the plot behind Gilbert.
If he's talking about like a Plan B in case this doesn't, maybe that's where he's, are you saying that maybe in case it doesn't? Yeah, I, I don't know.
So let's go there when that, if that Plan B is needed. I mean, right now, they're telling us that it's not, so I hate to take up time discussing that.
Well, I guess I'm looking at a Plan B too, in that respect, that what is the cost to develop site A versing site B as a backup plan?
They're both on file, so I mean, it's what's in.
So you're on a rock pile, okay.
One more question for John, because we've got kind of two scenarios here that's stalling the whole project. We got this land, and now the architects and engineers and all of this. Do you have like a, you know, ballpark figure, guess? We're holding up, it's being held up, you know, a lot of things are being held up. And we're talking about it's being held up because of these agreements to the bank, so, you know, there's a, there's a situation where there's a couple of different factors holding up the process. Do you have an idea of how long that might take, you know, or how short it would take?
I wish, I wish I did know, Polly. I mean, I'm already, to be honest, concerned that opening a fall 21 for that Evelyn Gilbert Elementary School is really tight. And we'll be reporting, I mean, the watershed, once we go in for the, the Army Corps could hold things up and getting permits. The state could hold up permits, Mother Nature can hold things up, so it's really tight scheduled. I mean, I think we're clicking along okay right now with the user groups. But pretty soon, the building layouts and things, and it just, every week, every two weeks makes a difference to start making some pretty big decisions. And I'm, and I've been on site A, saying, let's, let's figure it out, let's get this negotiated. Let's make sure it works, and we think it does. I mean, that's pretty new information from what you saw in the workshop, a couple, a couple weeks ago, we can have a go, whenever that was. So, but we'll start building that schedule a little bit more detail as, as the architect feeds. You go through a level schematic design, which is about a, design will be about 15% done, and we'll do a series of estimates and schedules from there. And we go into design development, when the drawings are about 50% done, we'll do another set of estimates and schedules from there, and then into construction drawings, and then eventually bidding. So it'll be a process of a lot of updates that these boards will start making approvals on. I answered the question a long way, but there's, we'll be feeding you that information as the process gets further.
There's a couple of things holding this up, that that could be the bigger, longer holdup than just getting these agreements.
Well, yeah, for example, I mean, if we started looking at another site, well, brakes are squeaking, we're, we're in them hard. We're, but they're, you don't, you haven't even started negotiating property, we don't even know exactly where the boundaries are, we don't know the price of the property yet. There's a lot of things that have to be figured out just to start designing.
But you're taking into consideration on another site, where you have no wetlands, all high ground, good access. Isn't it worth looking into, again, the process of, I'm glad to understand that. The way this timetable set everything, we got to be done by 2023.
If someone wants to send me to.
Rushing, rushing, rushing through the whole process.
I have to kind of rush through the whole process, so I can, I disagree.
I think we went down that road, if someone wanted to send me where it is, and the acres, and who's the owner, and how much it costs. I mean, I could report on it, but I, I think the decisions have been made. I mean, I could certainly give a opinion on it, that you're making a big mistake, but I don't think that's the case.
All right. All right.
Look at 30 acre parcel land that is available for sale.
Unless, I, I don't feel that we should even approach that unless all of a sudden site A is falling through. I, I just, I feel like there's so much time and work that has been going into why we chose site A, and that's not even assuming, I mean, there would be, be other potential sites that would be looked at, I don't know, I'm just, I think that's a whole separate conversation, and I don't necessarily think that we need to go there right now.
I'm staying at the, I guess I'm just looking at the monetary value of this, of this site to this site, and we're spending money, tax-free money, actually.
Yeah, but, yeah, so, well, yeah, but the best break isn't necessarily the monetary value either. We discussed many pros to having it at site A, and for having it close to the academies, for parents to be able to drop off children, and being able to maybe use some of the facilities back and forth for after-school sports, for, I mean, there were all this other stuff, so it's not just a monetary value, I think, that we were looking at for site A. I just, do you wanna go over this a little bit? I mean, part of the reason why I wanted to have this meeting was to kind of go over some of this. I know what, that we discussed with, with Mitch and with Margaret about the joint powers, and about, you know, the resolution, and how the resolution is just to begin the process. I mean, you know, this kind of lays out what consolidation looks like, and I think that's one of the things that have, has been a concern of people who have contacted me. So, you know, like, like, one of the things is, so what does consolidation look like? When July 2020 was thrown out there, does that mean consolidation of kids? Does that, in July of 2020? If it is consolidation of kids, is it classrooms, are sports, is sports, what, what does it look like? I mean, I think that's, that, when somebody hears consolidation, they think everything is merged, all people are merged, all the kids are merged, all the business office, and everything is merged, and, and this does not say that. I mean, this says that, you know, we'll send a plan to the state of Minnesota, you know, athletics, all athletics would be integrated in 2022 to 2023 school year, but there might be some integrated before this, before that year, most likely because of low numbers. Students' activities, all activities integrated, I'll just go through it.
Well, that sports one, stop at that one too. Would some sports be integrated because of the minors and the Virginia football, no, I'm just asking, is that what you're talking about?
And I think, I think, yeah, I think it would. I mean, I think it would involve that, and...
It doesn't have to.
But, but I'm looking at it as a give and take. I mean, we've been without a track, and they allowed us to use their track. I mean, I, you know, I look at some of those things as well.
No, no, just a logical question, I wondered if that's what you were talking about too.
Well, I, I'm just looking at sports in general, I mean, you know, 'cause I think there's some that are looking at, are all sports going to be combined in, after July 2020? And, you know, this specifies athletics, again, integrated in 2022, 2023 school year, some might integrate before this year.
When might we know, when might we, when might we know what, which ones might be integrated before 2020?
Or I think that would be up to the superintendent and the AD, and looking at the numbers, and...
And not for numbers, or for other reasons?
I think that's a case where, I mean, the AD's sitting down with the coaches and hash out a transition plan. And if that means all of them, when the doors open, that's fine, but I mean, if there were situations, and I won't use any specific examples, but I mean, if we couldn't form, if we didn't have enough to make a team, yeah, I mean, see, that would be a natural point where you would combine.
So then the question has come up, well then, who would you, who would you, would you be playing that sport as Ellis Gilbert Golden Bear, or would you be playing that sport as a Blue Devil? I mean, I'm, I'm just trying to answer some of these questions that are coming, because we are at that point now of consolidation talk, and people are asking these questions. And, um...
And I miss that too, because that, those are the questions I've got. When would the Virginia school district have to not have their, not be able to play on where the minors are, their ball fields and their football field? When is that? I've had that question asked of me.
It's at the end of next year, end of the school year.
Okay, so, okay, so would those teams be consolidated then?
They could be if we chose to, but if we didn't want them to be, they can go out the field so badly.
Well, that's all, so I think that's all.
I mean, this is a draft, it's, it's the purpose of the resolution, to allow those conversations to happen.
Right.
To start formalizing some of those potentials, and getting the right people at the table, because I'm not the right person to be speaking about when certain sports should be merging.
He just answered one of them, very frankly, yes, right into next year, for that, they won't have their fields.
That will be, yes, that will be one of the things, but...
That doesn't necessarily mean they'll be fully, they'll group in sharing.
Will they be sharing this, sharing our fields?
That doesn't, I agree.
I mean, yeah.
We've got an answer right now, so I can pass that answer.
You know, and about the budgets, and integrating the budgets, you know, 20, the 2020 to 2021 school year, community education, I know that there's been people that have spoke to me throughout the last couple of years I've been on the board about, you know, getting more community education classes, and, you know, talked about integrating the start of 2020, 2021 school year. So I, I mean, I, I kind of asked for a timeline from you, and you provided that, and so I wanted to just have a conversation about it.
And that, that's by no means a final document, it's a rough draft of this is how it could look.
Yep.
In my eyes, and actually, I sat down with Noel and kind of roughed it out, but I mean, that's, those are kind of the progression that, that I see.
This is something that you and he both went through to kind of get a rough draft of how it could look.
And there might be stuff under missing, I don't know.
Well, you know, in, in the other conversations that I've had too, is, you know, if we're, if we have our high school kids under one building, and we don't consolidate, what is that gonna look like? I mean, you've got two, you know, you've got two separate school districts, having, having to schedule two separate preparalies, utilizing the same pool for, you know, practices, you know, all that kind of stuff gets pretty crazy, so...
But, but the question was, at the end of the 2022 school year, you would graduate 2022, you would graduate as a Golden Bear or a Blue Devil?
That was another one of the questions.
Okay, and at the beginning of the 2022, 2023, you would graduate under the new name, new mascot, new color?
Right.
That's what, that's what we would be. So if you're worried, and people are worried about their kids graduating Golden Bear, if you consolidate it right away, no, they, I think that the, you would graduate a Golden Bear.
And just, just an example, I use with, I mean, St. Louis County Schools, Duluth, Grand Rapids, and there's, those districts have a lot of different schools with a lot of different names, and I mean, it's not a pair, we're just starting the process of providing, thus, business-wise and...
I just think the timeline, even, even though it's a draft, it, it gives some information on what that consolidation looks like. So I appreciate the fact that you worked together with them on that, to be able to present it to us, and then send it on the table as well.
All sponsorship, wow, I just...
But it's not, it's still, that's what you're saying.
But, again, it's a rough draft, it's...
That's gonna be a moving document, I can't...
All right, that's all.
And it's very helpful, it's very helpful.
It is helpful, I think it is helpful too.
And with that, what sports are consolidated already, it's something you can add in there, I mean, what, girls hockey's consolidated, what else, does anybody know?
Soccer.
Soccer, skiing, I mean, there's a lot of sports that are consolidated already, not consolidated, pairing and sharing, with not only Musawi East in Virginia, but Virginia and...
You know, and there's another decision that we're gonna have to make.
Yeah.
There's a ton of those that, I mean, yeah. And then there's lots of, lots of decisions to make, I think.
Yeah. So, I don't know if you wanna put that on the website, or, or what you wanna do there, but like I said, it at least gives people an idea of what it, what it could look like, the rough draft, draft of what it could look like, and when things would potentially start happening for different things, like the integration of students and athletics.
And the classic example, I used with Matthew, when you look on that, by the end of the school year, you need to have building names and colors and mascots, but the reality is, that's about the time that he's gonna wanna pull up a bit on building practices and that stuff, I mean, I don't know, it's not that. And I suppose, from the outside looking in, that could be a little scary, you're thinking, oh my goodness, I'm gonna murder all my teachers again.
So...
Well, I think we have to start doing it.
So Mitch, can we, can we start working on those kinds of things, like the colors and the mascots, and we can work on all of those things without actually being consolidated or having the board make that vote yet, or putting it out to the community? We can, we can make all those...
Yeah, I would all be part of your discussion, I mean, 'cause, you know, whether you're doing it this by consolidation, or whether you're doing it by collaboration, all of that combination, or with two different legal avenues to join two school districts together, you can start that process anytime, it means you can have people working through those details, and they'll take that all the way back.
Okay.
Yeah, so there's, there's a legal barrier that would bar you from starting discussions now, and trying to get some good plan in place.
We should take a little break, really late for the next meeting.
Yeah, so we'll take a break. All right, meeting's clear.